I'm going to request that we take a minute for silence. As an opening prayer, just one minute. Amen. Today marks a very important day in the history of Obitive College. And the next, the beginning of bigger things to happen in this area or in this institution. When I was with the office of being the center manager for the Center of Entrepreneurship, for entrepreneurship and entrepreneurship, I come in college four months ago. I said to a teacher, "The best thing that I leave is to meet all the entrepreneurs who are beneficiaries of the services of the Center of Entrepreneurship." Unfortunately, it has taken some time, so a lot of consciousness that I tried to put in place. But today, I'm the happiest person. And your presence here means everything to this institution. It means everything to me, it means everything to the management of Obitive College at the Center. We're supposed to have a very short program, and I'm trying to keep it short. The problem, I think, is already in front of you. And without wasting time, my name is Peter Matou. My name is Peter Matou. Muhamad. Ya'ud Muhamad. Ya'ud Muhamad. Amen. I think it is a glory. Muhamad, what do you think about that? Muhamad, what's the password for that? You can get it from the first floor, you can get it from the bottom. The password for that, you can do that, you can move it, you can get it from the bottom. Without wasting time, I would call it on, Mabunabi, the campus manager for Mango Campus to come and welcome all of us, Mabunabi.
By this moment, allow me to open with the handiest gesture. Center for Entrepreneurship and Entrepreneurship, this is my first American ceremony. My name is Mabunabi, and the executive campus manager for Mango Campus. May I observe what of course I had to welcome before me, distinguished guests, and acknowledge now our presence. Mr. Evi Muhamad, from Wust, from the local municipal entity. Mr. Rukhan Ramafouq, from Free Events and Enterprise. Our three founders from FMB. This is still Kene, and this is Tom Phasomoye, from Eropa. Mr. Matogaswana, from NYDA. Mr. Simon Mokina, and Mr. Mrs. Tebo Ulisela. From Sipa, Mr. Tukosa. From Sira, Mr. Tabo Munyani. And all the other examples, as I mentioned. And our very own, the principal conference secretary, Mr. S. Machian. They are also welcome, all of its staff, and students, men and students, and the organizers of this event, and any other VIP, not singled out by name. As a campus, we find ourselves once again, having the opportunity to put the future in our second generation. I call it the future because it has got a lot of things to pose in the future for all students in this community and everyone else. I'm the proudest campus owner to have the privilege of exposing my students to the world of entrepreneurship without hands. Nowadays, I'm enjoying it. It's a major project. I need our countries don't take you to it. The number of it is caused by major factors such as, in a region of a country, provide enough resources, low educated, and unskilled human resources, and a weak capacity for traditional capital formation. However, there are ways to alleviate unemployment, such as, and training for those who are in the workforce, as well as foster the spirit of entrepreneurship. We always, at the campus, encourage students to turn big. Be creative in exercise competitions, to achieve their goals. As a future leader, we should have a mindset to run their own businesses. And a good example is the founder of Microsoft. He told everyone that at the end of the day, everyone will do a really good job. But what happened? They laughed at him. But what is the reality today? Everyone is doing more than they want. So, we can carry it through the reality through hard work and determination. There's an English physician, a doctor, called David Alden. He believes in the myth of progress. That states that civilization has moved, is moving, and will move in a desirable direction. I cannot better agree with David. It is in the context of his assertion that I propose the thing for our individual entrepreneurship today. I would agree that David, in 1982, had a unique understanding of what is in terms of entrepreneurship in modernity. In recent time, many academians have tried to narrow and define and understand of what entrepreneurship is, or what it could be. But none have come with a satisfactory definition. Instead, many agreed on a way of knowledge that governs entrepreneurship, in line with David. They have turned it into a process of a society of progressive, social, creative movement. This is significant because it then states that entrepreneurship is not only a process of starting a business, an enterprise for profit or venture, but rather a process of starting, beginning, or initiating, and undertaking that new society which is progressively desired direction. What I'm saying is that, let us start embracing entrepreneurship. It is a process of progressive development, an opportunity to evolve and find creative content to address our society, the best, the greatest, and develop better challenges. An opportunity to regress and move our societies in a desired direction. Entrepreneurship is beyond its partnership and established business. It is a culture, a way of thinking, an attitude, and opportunity to do best. It is our commitment to embrace the work of the Entrepreneurship Center at Mango Campus, and my hope is to see many students emerge out of the incubation process as pioneers and winners of innovation in society. Let us go, let us all look around and see another opportunity that lies within the eyes of plastic and sunshine, and thus we have a bit of entrepreneurship. May I wish to hold a juvenile game, as it is a remarkable and unique event. Thank you all for allowing us to event by your presence. Without you, it would not be possible. On behalf of the college, Sira management, and campus management, we really appreciate the collaboration. Thank you, Mabunabi, and your hearty welcome, the summer is sufficient.
Thank you very much, Mabunabi. We appreciate your willingness to operate, sign up for entrepreneurship, and be a creator in this campus. It is regarded as one of the good rap entrepreneurship's departments, but we want to take it further away and become now to a standard. Item number two on the agenda is the post of day by the center manager, Mr. Peter Matou. Ladies and gentlemen, when Mabunabi was here, I could think of a number of things. It is not easy to be a entrepreneur. The lines and kinds of entrepreneurs are very hard. Now, the purpose of today is only to say to you guys that we have a helping hand as of now. We have a hand that will help you where possible within your intention as an entrepreneur. I want to take this time and appreciate all the entrepreneurs who have been supporting of this center from pretty six years when it started to now. Mr. Matou is here in the hearing. Please I wish that the college should go all out to support small and medium enterprises within this area. I have prepared to take you through the mission, the scope of work that we have at the same time. Actually, I think slides when I woke up this morning that I decided to reduce them to only fifteen slides. Only fifteen slides. I will not waste the lot of time with a long, heavy head schedule. Obitive College Center of Entrepreneurship, or Entrepreneurship, that has been campus also officially launched by the Business Development Minister, Lino Zulu, on the 27th of March 2017. That is why we are currently operating now within the two campuses. Please I wish that before the end of next year, we will be in reference campuses. We are now known as Obitive College Center of Entrepreneurship, like an incubator. Abbreviated CFERI. When you see this abbreviation, they start, you will know. The aim of the Center for Entrepreneurship, or like the incubator, is to provide entrepreneurs skills to the youth, to the startup entrepreneurs. It also aims to offer support for entrepreneurs who have already established SMEs but require necessary coaching and guidance for business expansion. We aim to be the center of excellence that offers solutions in entrepreneurship through coaching and mentoring, public events and lectures, partnership and support technology, support coaching and mentoring of entrepreneurs. Our mission is to provide the necessary enterprise development services that are relevant, customer center, and the contribution development of individuals and individuals to grow. If you read through this, you will see that we are only focusing on support for entrepreneurs. We are regulated, and we are operating within the confines of the college. We have a bigger governance status. We have a governance for addressing structure which is led by the principal of this college. We already have seven members who are serving under the vice admiral. The center manager is the president speaking. I'm supposed to employ about five people who are going to support this initiative. At the moment, we only have three people working in the center. That's why you see me, MC, and also doing other things because my team is busy outside. What is it that we do? We will invite, when we have occasions, but to remind you, we are supposed to do intensive business development training. How are we going to organize our trainings? It's already happening with the partnership that we have with the head by the age. But we want to take this training to a higher level. We have to train you to a level, and a five level, since we are busy doing the partnership, that will be able to assist you at that level. You will be informed formally when we have training sessions, but you also have to see our new website which will be coming very soon. We are assisting with business concept of idea development. Many of our SMEs, our young people, want to get into business, but they have ideas that we need to have assist them. We will assist to professional, professionally developed of business players. Business registration and compliance, I'm sure some people already know that we have assisted with registration of their businesses. Tax registrations and compliance, assist with access to business finance. I think this is our first step today also to public sector. Then we have FMB also here. We have actually invited other finance institutions like the Sipa. We have invited also the Absa Bank to be around us, but this is why we do this. We will assist you with market interest and access. I'll explain how we're going to do all this here. Mentoring of holding of entrepreneurs successful in creation of business players. Now, the big thing here is really we have a very good business place, which is part of, you must be able to implement it. And if you want to get stuck, you now know where to go for professional assistance. I want to play this clip, I don't want you to lose. And this is some of the things that we do. We're chopping out our good stories to jam. And I hope technology will not... It's bad. It will not go, I know why. The network is not going to go here. But I will play this clip, whether I do it at the end of my day or what, what, but I've got to play this clip because it's one of our success stories that we have done last year, and it's something to be very proud of. When they sit upon visiting this Center for Entrepreneurship, they said to me, "Mr. Matou, why do you want to do, to support entrepreneurship?" And I said, "It is perhaps the only way to do it." And we have started, and I want to show you this slide, showing the end of our presentation. We are hoping to set the leaders' list of sites, the most important, the municipality, the Rastunek, the municipality, the Kefi, the municipality, the Nkile, the local municipality, and Wolebe, the local municipality. These areas, we are saying, are within our reach. We have students from Orenti who are attending at Mango Campus. We have students from Edelweiss, the D, the D, who are also attending at this college, who are our clients, who we must support. So we are located throughout of the Jana district municipality, and we will be starting expanding to reach out to the city of D, our next event, to have the intention that we local municipality. Now, in terms of what we are supposed to do as an incubator, we're supposed to be all right. In particular, the students who are going to train at the college, they automatically prepare the rentals. We will follow this model. This model actually takes you through eighteen months, but we want to follow this model for thirty-six months. So if you are an entrepreneur with us, starting entrepreneur, we'll go through all these processes to make sure that at the end we take you out of the process, and you are successful entrepreneur. Now, we start by upskilling our students. I know some of my students are here that are training in this environment. We will take them through upskilling, we will boot camp them, market analysis with them, accelerate their program, and launch them into the world of wildness, where they will be on their own. Now, within the first six months of their training, they have been skilled into automotive repairs and maintenance. The next six months is going to involve intensive session with business development advisors, market assessment, and the go-to-market strategy. So what we'll do to these learners, who are going to take them through, to an extent that they are able to get funding, basic funding to be able to start their businesses. And the last month will be watching them whilst they are operating. We are hoping this model approved by the SIDA is a model that will be able to assist us to take the learners through the incubation process. What we do, what we do in the incubation process is we introduce them to entrepreneurship or direct to process. Now, I know some people will be saying, "Mr. Matou, how do you know about this one?" Because we are, our main focus is automotive repairs and maintenance. We know there's very few operations happening in this area, but that is the model that we want to take through, and we bring automotive. And when we finish this building in five years, we have this area operating fully in terms of automotive repairs and maintenance. Now, that is what we do, and I don't want to be scandalous because I didn't want to talk about it. I presented this little picture to my adversary board to say, "This is what I see happening." And what I see happening is that we will be able to build a structure, and that structure must be able to incubate our assets within the college and serve the community. I have deliberately invited Aramah here, and they are going to be in the meeting to speak about automotive repairs and maintenance. I know it may not be very relevant to people who are doing construction, but there are those people who are in automotive that will benefit a lot from what we get from this. Now, with this center that I have shown you, this center will be able to do diagnosis and checkup, injuries and suspensions will arrive, be able to sell spares and parts. So if twenty 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 two is going to end, and we have not achieved this, then we might be behind what we intend to be. And other members are able to see there that up load, we have partnerships, we have been funded by the SIDA, the reason why we're sitting in this meeting is that we are being funded by the SIDA, which has a partnership with the college. We have a partnership with Auntie Anne, I'm happy to say one of us trained her in the health area condition. I'm sharing that slide with you possibly before the end of this presentation. We have a partnership with the UIF, which have helped us a lot in terms of the training that we're supposed to do. Our aim is to train about three hundred fifty learners. People who don't have business, who don't even know what a business is, we are supposed to train three hundred fifty of them, and we're supposed to have finished this task by March twenty twenty-two. In twenty twenty-two, we'll train four hundred learners into entrepreneurship. If this exercise succeeds, also the support we are getting from this institution. Now, we also have an agreement with the UIF, which is funding our incubators. And we have at present stopped the process, but we'll continue within the UIF. We are looking at pursuing this relationship with Aramah, because if you move into the automotive space, people like Aramah, you cannot put them out. That is basically our business campus mode. We have to go to the business campus mode, in the whole two days of presentation. We will be the next one to be launching the business, business plan. We are targeting a business that is more objective. Come on. With the niche idea. people like Aramah, you cannot put them out. And this is our, our business card, that's why we have to go to the BTO, so this business card, that's why. We will take the whole presentation. We will be the next month, the leadership of business, business plan. We are targeting business, that's what we're looking for. Come on. With the niche idea. Of a business plan. And we will be assessing their plans and support them if successful in the next year. There are a number of you who have moved into the clothing and textile industry. We, we want to take a very serious look into that one and be able to support you in twenty twenty-two. The business concept of idea launching will happen next year. We are part of the MTN app of the year. And we are on the fourth launching ourselves again to compete with universities. With Hawaii. We take a lot about creating an app. I'm sharing with you a good, very good story, one of our students here. For the project we're launching this year, we were three weeks behind. And one of our students said to me, Mr. Mekong, I need your laptop. I've got a concept. And he created a smart app. And that smart app, you will see on our website. We are going to put it there. That app enables all students across the country to be able to apply for funding everywhere. Now, you'll be surprised because it was not even an IT studio. So let's just. We are taking that part upon ourselves and we are calling it MTN. On the fourth of next month, we'll be having all the students participate in that competition. And next year, we want to see it growing as a bigger and bigger and bigger. He's already participated in the Hawaii app of the year and also the Inter app of the year. And we want to encourage techno companies going forward. In twenty twenty-two, we'll be launching our biggest space, greatest space. Now, if you go to our center, which I would invite all of you to visit here, to pass by our center here at Mambo Campus and see how rapid an institution we have grown through the Sipa funding. And if you have meetings, if you want to use your laptop to do a search of some sort, the center is actually open. And every time I sit in that center and the only person who comes in, I get worried. Because SMMPs who are coming in Rastunek must also have an access to the center that we have here. We are not in any way neglecting our center in Rastunek. Now, we have all the equipment to make, to make a, a, a major space possible. We are, we have ordered a creative room, five by six, to operate in our major space. In that center, we are hoping to be able to produce techno companies who are will be above level. You know, some people are making a living through electronics, through their home. It should not be limited to people in Wuhan and Sparta.
Amen.
It should not be. In twenty twenty-two, we are going to train about four hundred learners and we'll keep a record of them. We want to see how many of them that we train end up being interplayers. We will incubate twenty learners in the automotive repair and maintenance program of area that women with UIF support those learners. So the program will, will, will launch in twenty twenty-two. What we are planning to do is weekly interplayation information programs in our centers. Now, we are going to make this tablet so that anybody who's interested, different topics will be discussed on different days. We are waiting by specialists on the weekly basis to be able to talk to you about your tax programs. And I know Mr. Chow has already told me that one of the biggest challenges with the SMMPs is the issue of tax compliance. We want to complete it to the speech. And I'm discussing with the Sipa to say how have we found this. I've already submitted to them my proposal. And I hope as soon as they approve it, we'll be able to implement it. Approved or not be approved, we are going to have weekly interplayation information sessions that will happen in Rastunek and that will also happen at Mambo Campus. That, that actually says to the SMMPs that you are invited to visit. If you have a meeting with your cooperatives, we will come with a video. Free internet access, free computer or laptop that you can respond. As soon as the Hola Bee are considered a home, they will be able to use our home and free advice possible. One of the things that we are looking at is an open market day. Um. Um. We want to expose our SMMPs. And how we're going to do the open market days is what we are discussing with Moses Potab. Montana Municipality is one of our big partners here. To say, if you go to Montana, you'll see SMMPs are being exposed. And weekly basis, you'll see SMMPs displaying their products and the product. Now, we want to make sure that the product that you guys are developing is exposed as much as possible. We also create space within our website where you can advertise your businesses and you want to use this data. We are projecting with the area about inclusion of learners in the air conditioning integration space. Now, if you move around the campus at Mambo, you'll see there's a big workshop that was built by Samsung Air Conditioner Integration. And we want to take advantage of that space. And we will train pretty learners in that space about air conditioning integration with a, with a clear intention of identifying and being able to start in their own business within this space. I was told to leave. Like the team, you must work, like I said. Ladies and gentlemen, we are of the College Center for Interplayation and the Incubation. You can find us at that address. Our email address, it's my email address, and the email address of the administrator of the center. We are connected to the website of Oviti West College, so now, but we will have our own space where we want to market the interplayers as much as we can. We have a Facebook page, it's going to like us. Oviti West College Center for Interplayation. And that is where I end my weekly slides. Thank you for listening to me. And nobody likes jokes. I like jokes very much. And sometimes I even go very intelligent to just get jokes and laugh. But I'm very careful in making jokes, that people end up laughing at me. So today I've decided, I'm going to let them give me a single joke. The next item, we are not, I'm waiting there and he knows speaker for the name. And I think we have this Mr. Evi Mukashov. He is working for the Moses Potab, it's local municipality, one of our big partners. And I'm, I'm very happy that he's also part of the advisory board for the Centre of Interplayation. And for the past twenty years that I've known him, he's had, he's always had these massive ideas about value chain. Produce a product, but where are you taking the product? I'm benefiting from the process. And I'm going to give you this platform and edge for the interplay that I hear to listen to this speech. I said, you must give this slide. He said, no, no, I'm speaking of the guy. So I'm going to call upon Mr. Evi Mukashov, who's going to talk about interplay. You may not have heard it too. The guy. The man who was very appropriate because he had a central manager, so he was a kind of a student. Now, people like ourselves have a model, like we are. Even to a level, you can't stand that. You can't stand that. Speech is a, a, a. This is what I need to go to the host, to go to the committee, so many lines here. So that the man who was very appropriate because he had a central manager, so he was a kind of a student. Now, people like ourselves have a model, like we are. Even to a level, you can't stand that. You can't stand that. Center, center, center. That you can't. In which, right man? Mine? Okay. You may not know that we are a strong.
Not a strong.
Oh, what's a man? Let me tell you why you might have to try. I do believe that's me, not you. It's a life with the communities, I was trying for a long time. So some of the promises that I want to allow you to be strict, right? You might not really die, it happens, she be to you all the day to business. And you might have to go over the book, you go, what are you trying to? There was a lady from Sipa, I saw. You might go, it's a, it's a, it's a, FMDP here. Who's from FMDP this time? I can smell the burning somewhere. The man who I love, right? Why, why do you want to affect people? There are only a lot of problems that are about people that come on. Have I figured out the institution, mobile company to solve it? But I just want to see it, you are audit financial statement. Do you mind if I have a question? Raise your hand please. Maybe some of them have. Thank you. My speech today is going to come from my heart and my experience, coming from the rock. I'm working the art business, I used to run the cultural caravans, I don't know where. I was part of the China, it's a channel one, five, seven, one, two, three. We also push issue via skill, activity, I was a part of that as well. I don't know, it's a man, it's a man. I put leg up, put his up, he don't go to come on my table, my table. But here to my address today are two people. The first person, Robert Kiyosaki. My Robert Kiyosaki, raise your hand. Raise it up, it's a little bit, I'm a woman, I'm a man. He is a woman, he won't go to the room, he will go to the bar. I just want to make this as lively as I can. Because more often, the woman, the woman, the woman, the woman, the woman, the woman, the woman. You might have, I think, he is so that he never will. Robert, I mean. I was asking a question. The Robert Kiyosaki. Who is Robert Kiyosaki? Robert Kiyosaki, who is he, who can, who can, who can reach that? He didn't say, he was a man, I have this, he who had a woman, he or he should get it. He said that the woman, he said that the woman, he said that the woman. What is it? Have you been told, well, you don't know who he is? Or you don't know, so he's going to kill this, that, that. Stay away from that thing, he kill this, that, that. And stay away from, since he has a sister, he will be my mother, my daddy, he will be my man. Never go, I will never, I will never go. Now, some of these things have blocked our brains to become the lead. That's what I mean, I'm a man. Robert Kiyosaki writes a book, he says, he is a student. Nah, he didn't say, Papa, I'm a man, I'm a man. But I'm dead, I'm a woman, I'm a woman. And then, he said, I'm a woman, he said, I'm a woman, he said, I'm a woman. He might have, he said, I'm a woman, he won't go. Raise your hand, since he is a man, like a woman, he won't take that. Let me explain the game of monopoly. Those who have played the game of monopoly. That is business. Do you agree with me?
Yes.
That is business. Besides, I still have one child. Two, regular society, three, one, you're there, four, we're there. Again, is that not business? But in the middle of now, where everything is not paying tax. You know, inside the monopoly. So, I'm standing in front of you today to address this issue of saying, oh, that is a tough problem. Small, medium and micro enterprises are a key component of any business. He can't hold on, he won't make a call. Now, we must nurture you. We must speak to you in such a way that when you walk out of here, you must be motivated. It's a right.
Yes.
We need to talk to you in such a way that you feel wealthy already. But how do you feel wealthy? You know, our people want a lot, give her a form, I want to say, hey, I say. Letter of appointment, they hide it, I'm sure, I'm a woman, I'm a woman, I'm a woman. Letter of appointment. Not payment. This payment, they are married, you are a woman. The letter of appointment and the contract, but it's a man. No, he didn't, he's a man. Yeah, Ramatou, Ramatou, he's a man, he's a farmer. That man is serious, but I think that's not serious. Please, listen to what he says, he has to be better. If you want to have a man, you can have a woman. If you feel my, you might have people, my, in any, he is a good lord, he will be a good child. He will love you. He's a good child, I am, I'm a child. Again, if you want to have a woman, I don't expect you to have a woman. If you want to have a woman, you think I'm a woman?
I'm not sure.
You're not sure? I'm not, I'm not, I'm not. I have a lady. You might have a woman, I'm a woman, I'm a woman. My daughter, she's a man, huh? Ma? It's a matter of quality, because long as they're, he's a long as they're, he's a lady. I find a way, entrepreneurship from that perspective, right? To say, who are we? The second person I want to talk to today, Kichika Oneyani. Who knows Kichika Oneyani? Ahah. Kichika Oneyani writes a book, he's a man, he's a man. Do you know that book? He says, black people are a market. They consume everything from everywhere, they only need to eat their ingredients. That's why some of us are always too, a bit dilution. The three, after three dimensions. Because I'm eating so much fat, fancy food, I was only in one morning to say, how do you have a woman, so good, you're a man, and most men, I'm eating five. How many of you eat man? I, my woman, I'm a woman, I'm a woman. For this time, I want to give a proper, a local development, a good place, it's important. But I'm not going to play at the same time. Countries have developed until today. And the countries that develop, they say, they say, they're a community, they're a matter. They learn, they learn, they learn, they learn, they learn from them. They're a good country, they are. How many of you buy from Wall Street today? Woman? I'm trying to tell you, the economy that was built by the Chinese, that forty years ago, that particular economy was not existing. After the Second World War, China suffered intensely. China suffered, yes, Singapore had nothing. Today, Singapore is one of the leading countries when it comes to economic development. They developed the best human resources that they, they are costumistic products, so high. They focus, they work on small, medium enterprises. The reason why I'm talking to you today about these issues. He rather had to worry about, 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 maybe you're there, right? So that during your spare time, already, I'm a capitalist man. For the whole, what you eat every day.
She manufactures correlated I D R. She manufactures from zero. And she sells them. Why don't you go there, you know what? If you can control your output, your output will be very much better. Okay, man?
Ah, I run an online gift shop. So we supply many corporate gifts, birthday hampers. So everyone has a potential client in mind.
Don't ambush my platform. Let's not push marketing. But that's what Yosaki is saying. What you do in your business must be on your time. What you do, what you sell must be on your... Every day, you know? Let her know that I seek whether to speak your product. So that we share my... Can you see my little baby?
Um, this must be here.
Ma?
Must be here.
Must be here. You're in the brilliant space. At what level are you? Are you a strainer? Are you a media owner? Are you a worker?
I am a media owner.
You own a media house?
Yes.
Because when I saw you, I just said that. Man? Wow. Give him a big round of applause. S M B S, more happy here. Give him another round of applause. When we talk entrepreneurship, this is it. I was scared that I'm on a blind lady speech, maybe in statistics, it's like who you get. I'm great, I'm ready. Again, so that we emerge from here. That the market is taking most, you will never go indirectly. It's taking no speakers, what way? So that whatever we're able to do, we know how to tailor make your needs. So that your service gets to be easy in your... In your hand. That it?
Uh, if our steel works, uh, we have a lot of steel here.
We're a company. Where are you buying your steel?
Um, buying from the valley. Steel inside.
There's a steel person behind me there, I need to talk to her. Right behind you, you had no more. Look at the smile. She is in the into the steel space. That the market will give my love for value chain. The market will not cover. The market needs to say to me more, you know? Again, and you must do very clean, very clean, the bank that you have there. Stop! Stop buying a time, that's a dirty. Don't buy a time from here. Because the guy has a spare profit. Uh, Mr. Konstrat. I know you have a good taste. Uh, yes, that it? Who's here? What about again? Another steel. Who are yet together, he's a law, but they can't help him for it, you know? This is called networking. Again, having... Harata saasan, you know, that is pretty good. We clear who networked, thanks to Mr. Manlo and the center. Yes, sir.
Yeah, I'm in the learning space. Oh, yes, now I'm in the learning space.
Did you speak to the guest houses?
Yes.
Have they...
Yeah, most, most.
Thank you very much. Give him a round of applause. He was ready, he was ready. That the market... That man was ready. You may say, that man's coming small back. I was looking, I was just awaiting the explosion, he didn't explode. We gave him a device to say, this plus minus forty years now, this is one of us. Go and offer your services. This is what he did. So that's the very thing you are talking about, man? As much as we can, let's try and cut out the revenue from. You're too before that, they say?
Eh, I'm multimedia designer.
Ma?
Multimedia designer.
Graphics or multi?
Multi.
Does it include graphics?
It includes graphics. The graphics, the motion, the animation, the post-production, the modeling.
Okay. So you are a video writer sometimes?
Yes.
Okay.
Do you provide?
Katu, Mumbai is a brand, I guess. It's a, it's a brand we are... They are all right. Yes, call it Katu, Katu Miki and the... Have you talked to him? That it?
I offer two terms, services.
Oh, I know you! It teaches myself. You look different today. It's always important, it's always in your heart. I think that the question that the market... I have my apologies. This man is a metoo. This man is an engineer. This man is an engineer. I don't expect... You talk that fast. Eh, you're a bit excited, man? That it?
Yes.
You have given a right. In your own right. Nothing stops you from being a entrepreneur. Now, you know, I don't want to talk about the economy, it's a... Oh, garlic, it's a good idea, that we are only... Look, it's a good idea. Nothing stops you. Maybe you're from this area, this is... We spoke, we know each other, I saw an idea. Ma? Eh, yeah, it, I know. It's almost... Man? The market will give you what you want, but what is it, what is it before? The nature of business goes and drives those that you can relate to. Man, let's, let's run, that the market is...
Nah, just my colleague from R I T, I don't know.
No, no, sorry, sorry. Eh, are you, you know? Tell I D.
Now, here's a break, it hydrates.
Wow. Will that it?
Break, it's a coloing, it's a tar, it hydrates.
Will that it break that?
Break lines.
Wow. You can, the guy makes you so shocked. You know, it's... Well, John, I'm going to hit upon the chum, man? And that's what I'm going to tell you, that's what I'm saying, sir. And that the man, man?
Eh, Karen, she is a body adventure into aquaculture.
Aquaculture?
Yes, sir.
Ishwani?
Yes, sir.
Is it pointing now?
Yes. Slowly, but surely, with the incubators assistance, yes, sir.
Is that thing waiting, are you serious?
Slowly, but surely.
You have fish in the pond?
Not yet.
You might try, I'm there, I'm there, the market, what are fish in the pond?
Not yet.
You tend up to this, I in Pangasias, still or eh...
Uh, Salmon.
Salmon?
Yeah.
Salmon is problematic, it comes from a cold country.
Exactly.
Now, this is a hot country.
Exactly.
You must go from Pangasias. Or Maragon.
No, we don't invest this, like, this is where we challenge the system. Um, as we all grew up in our fish tanks, go over, and you can get ocean fishes inside your house. You just regulate the temperature of the, of the tank.
They did that in every state in the world, eh? Here, here for me. Pangasias is adaptive.
Yes.
Man?
Yes.
It's highly adaptive. Look, because Haiti is another condition, yeah, man?
Yeah.
So Pangasias is a direct place to share, yeah?
Yes.
Well, John, man? Are you there?
Yes, um, I'm a student again. I do A P M health treatment.
Say it again?
I'm in the P T D doctor again, I do beauty and health treatment.
Beauty and health. Okay. I wish I could speak, I wish I had an hour. So that I can link all of you. Your existing opportunities, man? All what you do. Eighty, ninety percent of it, I know that I come from it. And something that might be Pangasias. But my, 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 I'm sure, message to yourself, yeah? One, please be innovative in those spaces. Be innovative. Try to know, say, this year. And do what you want, yes, it's true. Remember that. Be innovative. To extend off your product, it will normally see a word we call unique selling point. It must be uniquely projected. For how bad, for what, what, what is in that? But remember that. You must be innovative in your approach, in whatever you do. Secondly, you must be very creative. You know, you can be innovative and not be creative. But you need to have both. You need to be innovative. You need to be creative. Creativity talks to many issues. Creativity talk to market access. Creativity talk, don't be creative for your books. When I say your books, they are accounting. Don't be creative for the team. You'll collapse. Remember that. The last one, you must change the mindset. Change the mindset in a space in which you are aware. Allow me for about two minutes to talk about creative industries. Creative industries, this is where you are, that's your space, right? When the movie, you know? What do you want to do in the line? What do you want Italy? For the etas? What do you want? Might be, you can't address the words. What do you want, a commodity? What do you want, makeup artists? I wonder how big it can create opportunities for our people. Consider engaging with people in those spaces. Because more often than not, they are in the position of power when it comes to commissioning yourselves. I'd like to thank the four group of students. That are the type that you get. One is the first national brand. I'd like to thank you for your presence, yeah? But then you move, but that's... Just raise your hand, maybe you can help people here. I'd like to thank the little motor industry for being with us today. Those of you who are in the automotive space. The little motor industry is here with us today. Allow me to thank Siva. Members of the whole team at Roych and their management. And who are in the A N C that. I'm very grateful that we have met today in this platform. Now, what is the matter? For you to move into the spaces of running your businesses effectively? One, please register your businesses. Please register your businesses and that can be done here in this institution. Who does not have a registered business, I don't expect to see any here. You must have registered business, you can come and enjoy the day, that's it. I want to be free. You who should be, I'm not.
Eh.
Okay. Let's not do that. But honestly, there's no, who does not have a registered business? And they are in this business. That the man, anyway, who is from Siva. And then the center here is available. Business plans, business registrations. You must have a, you are a certificate, master. There you go. There you go. The center will be able to help you. Is that right? I think here, in my capacity, yes. I don't believe here, business, I don't think we must find it, but I see here also as well. To ensure that our CEO is fully supported at all levels. I call him CEO because he's a center manager. He does CEO because he does a lot of things that can help our communities. Lastly, allow me for the level high advice for two issues. I can see most of you, the friend of you, do not have dialysis. Most of you are not so ready to have. Never again, you're going to end this, I mean, oh, yes? That's what we is, this is what we are, we are not. I'm, I'm trying to say, the old orders, do you understand? Please have a diary. Diary, little diary. It's a, it's a daybook. You may write something that you were thinking about and then become an idea that can give you money. Please keep your diaries. Wherever you go, so that you record important activities. Secondly, tell nothing but the truth in the field of business. One need. Varanatha Pransari, the owner of Virgin, he says something else. And if they ask you if you can do this job, as an entrepreneur, you gotta say, I can do it. You learn in the process. But be careful what you say. They say you cannot be really powerful, you must say, no! Because you will have it. This is gentle, allow me to thank you for listening today. You have listened.
I just wanted to say, before you sit down.
Yes.
You know, because you are from the entity of his, uh, hardest activity. How does, you know? How do you learn about how does your office help as you want this?
My office helps one business through that, I'm sure. That's why the partnership. There are certain expertise that you do not have. Like they are pure business play. Like they are, they are doing, that's us. And there is this wrong. So we thought as a municipality, there's an expert who can deliver your hope. Hence, we are one of the major factors of this center for international. From now onwards, we are going to ask our S M Bs to flock to this place for all their needs. This place is one of our expansion centers. But I still can't hear you. I don't want to wish you luck in this business, this business, right, the band? Not eighty, but the band. Right, the band means great, man. Who are, who are, in the next five years, could you send me a range of construction and mining? Who are, who are, as board members in future? Who are, who are, you know, they are the best, they are the young. We bank, we have a bank, we can serve people, I know the owner of that. This was less than hundred thousand lights. But the money they gave today, it is gonna be a bank that said he... Because Pangas has a specialized, a kind of imported export funding. So how many were missing, you need two hundred there, you must be there. You move forward. How much I got it? How much? How much I got last? That's a queen, you know, that one. That's what the woman tried. Why don't you try, man? He doesn't have a car. He runs the car all the time. That gives all the money he worked and can afford even a cookie. Thank you for that, my man.
Thanks, that is my husband. I'm inclined to raise our comments on what you are saying. Eh, but let me give this time, eh, I've been requested by one of us people, as he's pushing me in a hard, hard ways. And, um, we have actually requested to have a major presentation. And immediately then, we go back to work on our success story. And the fish are definitely there. Follow my success stories. Um, I'm going to ask a man from the Sida, he just want to say something. I think, I hope it's not going to be long. But in case of, they will give us the next question. So when you know these people, it's easy for you, when you want assistance. You can always go to them. And I'm going to give just five minutes.
Okay, um, my name is Engi Posa from Siva and Master. Um, I'm just going to give, um, how does Siva work? I want to take the first time of, uh, of yours and then, uh, okay, Siva, it's a small enterprise management institute. We want small businesses. It's a loan, right? It's not a grant, okay? So we are just going to talk about the program that we are currently running. Uh, it's called TRAP. Uh, TRAP is a championship and rural enterprise program. And then, um, for that program, we have, um, we have eight centers whereby it covers, uh, bakery and food study. And then automotive, uh, mess, and then chariot, clothing and textile, food bridge, uh, personal care. And fashion shop, uh, uh, the last one is Chisanya. And then we give, it's a loan that goes to the grant, you know? The loan, the maximum is, is three hundred thousand. We don't give you the money, you buy whatever that you need. So you have to give us the contributions and then we pay to the supplier. And grant is, uh, the total amount is fifty thousand. That one, that's the one that you put into the business, um, based in, like, the business account. So, but the grant, we are not saying that, change the grant and go by something that's not related to the business, right? So, and then, um, they take around, they, 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 um, requirement period is, uh, maybe six months. So we only have the business startup operating. If you have startup, we don't, uh, we will not be able to help you. The business must be operating from three months going up. So, and then we give you a monituri of six months to operate for you and pay when they need. So the interest, we charge five percent only. Especially, uh, five percent. Yeah, and, and also charge the initiation, the initiation fee and the admin fee. Whereby, if, if you take the whole three hundred thousand as a loan, then you have an option to pay it upfront. But if you can't afford to pay that one percent initiation fee, you can, you can combine that initiation fee with the loan. Meaning that, then go take the whole two hundred thousand, then retain. Because the one percent of three hundred thousand is three thousand profit. Meaning that you can take twenty six something. Again, yeah, that is all. And then textile, can I see, you can go, then? If you need, if you need funding, it's a loan to the grant. The grant is fifty thousand, the loan is three hundred thousand. So, and then the bakery as well, and then I have personal something, beauty something. If you need, uh, funding as well, you can see me. Because I need to rush out to Rastab, thank you.
Thank, thank you, man. The idea is to make sure that we bring this to you as regularly as possible. Um, intention is to make sure that, uh, this, uh, this is not last. Maybe next year, you have so many of them, you can actually help. But intention is to bring the expertise, the right people who can assist us. And must. And where there is an opportunity like this, and you want to apply, and somewhere else you can start, please come and see us. We are here to assist you. There are some coaches that she's got here, eh, we'll, we'll share them with all of you. But please, let's take, let's take these opportunities and use them. Otherwise, there's a grant, there's money that the government is putting here. We always put our heads, heads on our head and saying, we don't have funds. Now, let us try to make sure that we take, eh, advocate for this, eh, offer. Now, I have, I have taken the initiative. To support some of the, eh, the smaller enterprises that are working in class. And one thing that I try to do with the same, is to try to make sure that there is an opportunity for something to be done to the center. It might be that, to this people that are working in class. Now, eh, when we went to town, eh, for some best practice. One of my S M Bs, for my last, we just shared that we are willing. We can, like, we do for, for the center of experimentation. But this one, she, she did for us. And, eh, so many people come back to be, as they came out. And we can be, can be. And it is our intention to expose whatever your business is doing. And when you are successful, we are also successful. The ladies who produce the sanitizers, I said, we are one hundred dollars from there. I was waiting. When we did the training for the center, they will see, we are part of the same business. So there's a very firm commitment to support you. And we will, we will not stop. We will not stop until we have everything that we done, we bring the center or the college being, eh, done by you guys. I was actually moved by this, um, uh, Hacha's presentation. And, eh, I think we are well placed to be part of this business that you are running. I'm going to call one of our success stories, Mr. Ogohim, Ramakuru. Eh, let's try to keep this business among ourselves. I know there are a lot of, eh, eh, employees of the college who are already supporting him. He makes very nice dishes, you can see, eh, I already have three of them now. So I'm also encouraging, and it's not playful for the center or the college. But he's one of us, let us try to support him. The chef can wear it, okay? Remove poverty of college and what, what, you can wear it, anyway. It completes with what China is doing. It completes with what you buy from Kuwait. Because what you buy from Kuwait, you can't from China, we used to call... Hong Kong. I buy from Kuwait. So we are, we are in a position to change, that they need to say, now this chef are from China, they are from Bangladesh, Abu Dhabi. I'm going to call one of our success stories, Mr. Ogohim Ramakuru. Okay?
My name is Madhav. Sorry. I am born and raised from a small village called Marco. In twenty, about twenty-five kilometers away. Um, the name of my business is called The Flames Enterprise and Project. So you ask yourself, what is the difference? The name is, is derived from our surname, our mother. The number three represents the number of sons my father had. Eh, the more going to some back to the land, I will work to be that we present that. The, my star side, which is theirs. So I took everything that I do personally and then put it under one. So that I can make business that best describes. Um, when I started this business, this was directly in sixteen. With the intention of going to another college. I used to have close number, possibly, I mean, and many others. And I was fortunate to be able to, to be exposed in field of the Nani Kisanah, I don't know how to say it. But Khasha, he was this in there. I used to attend some of the events, and he would talk about Kaffa, about Kaffa. And I got a lot of sentiment, I learned from several people. So we got the opportunity to learn from the likes of Khasha and possibly like. Khanzal was a great mentor. I was afraid to say, because he's my mentor, because I learned from, from him. He's one of the people that inspired me into, um, agriculture and completely to be more specific. Now, for one day, the whole area, Khurushake, Mkhala Ghar, Wata, Ugnara, I was in this area. And he was a communal farmer, not a commercial farmer. And then I realized, oh, there's money in your knowledge. Why don't I explore the saving group and see how best can I position my fellow, not just me? I realized the internet's key for me. Uh, I did a lot of mine in order for me to get there. That's why I took the bold step of moving into textile. I know Khurushake, uh, diversified. We need to be very, very agile. And we need to be able to incorporate from this point, I got the pleasure of meeting you. And then he's certainly high of ambition, uh, to pursue in the world of arts. So I got the pleasure of meeting you then. And what you said, Khasha, really caught my attention, oh. If really an entrepreneur, or want to, couple investment, want to, not want to choose what Nina has to focus on. While at the same time, Portova showed the, 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 I respect that. But we need to diversify, we need to learn to be able to move from this to that. Not trying to, you are over feeling okay, no, but learning how to become your free-fresh entrepreneur, someone that sees the opportunity, right? And he is able to come up with his solution. That's why an entrepreneur has to do that. So, um, like I said, the business was established in sixteen, I was still employed, seventeen, seventeen, eighteen. Twenty-eighteen when I moved full-time business, it was difficult test. Very, very challenging. As we know, for Montour, this, this mental health, man. There was a point where, when you talk about Khakisha, when I put it in the lady, with anyone. Even my family did not understand, I would go days without going out with my group. Because it was frustrating, well, I was very frustrated. No, 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 nothing, no sales, fuck off. Never, how do I make it work? I started a whole chicken special flight, oh, C F E. Um, Kappavana, you could, I think some of you guys know me. He's one of the guys, I'd be proud to say, if it wasn't for that man. He gave me this, he taught me how to develop a business in other countries. I am proud to say, he's one of the guys, by never, don't give up. You know, as much as, as much as we want to, it takes time, it's true. Mother, position, age, I guess twenty-seven, you know, I joined the company. And right now, we are in much better position than young people. And I'm proud to see, there's a lot of young people that are into businesses. And we feel some brilliant ideas from brilliant minds, still from Kizavon, who can just, like, you know, Khasha said, you can just collaborate and work together, who can, who can grow, come here, forty-eight days, going forward. Because North West is underlooked in any other, in any other area. So if we, as entrepreneurs, can position ourselves in that fashion, I don't hope, man. You know, they take our, and for our, sometimes you don't need those things. You just need to position yourself. My friend once said to me, uh, you need to surround yourself with people that share the same content. And we were fortunately, we introduced them. And some of us, when I need, uh, material, when I need, when I need this, I think it's centers like this that have taught us to collaborate. Collaboration is very important, uh, I would like to ask that a month for us. We need to collaborate. Sometimes who give a little notice, it's not ideal. But once we are here, we need to encourage the spirit of collaboration. I, I have worked with institutions like, I used to go there, and he, he managed to see, persistence, I got to them, many other, many other doors. Um, I've been attending a lot of trainings, all that to see that. Um, Kizavon, as well, I'm, I'm, I'm one of the people that are on it. Crossing my fingers, application, I get, I'm applying for, and fortunately, fortunately, I've, I've been receiving confirmation and SMS from the technical. Your application is, is successful. Uh, there's a number of opportunities that you can utilize. Ask them, just because one door closed, doesn't mean it's working. It's all, one, one, one of the business alternatives, I want to tell you. You know, you can apply for ten opportunities. And only one, maybe long, you don't focus on the nine. Focus on the one day who you're in, place you in the right position. For like outside, it's good for all. So that's where we are in a nutshell. And like I was saying about that, we need to diversify as entrepreneurs. Um, I think it's, it's very, very important, very, very important that the people, whenever you need to talk to other entrepreneurs that are in this chain, that you can talk with about whatever issues that you're dealing with. Right, it's, we are trying to establish something, like, for example, you know, one of the people that you know, bring, come from a, you know, world of, some of us don't come from there. House, money, funds, for the business. As I was saying, we are into textile and, we also do brand, and I'm sorry, I'm sorry. And that brings more, uh, that brings for, that brings for other government businesses. Uh, that says to you guys, we can also focus on other, the state of the government, uh, income. It will go back to what you want to achieve, whether you need it. We all know, we have several of us. We have sleepless nights thinking about how do we raise this, how do we grow this, this, this business back here? But now we know where, and we can, in a nutshell, we can, this is what we want, this is how we're going to progress. This is how we're going to grow our business. Not only do we feed ourselves, not only do we now want, you know, luxury life, but we want to create, we know, right now, we specifically looking. And let us make sure, whatever that we focus on, whatever that we put our attention on. Khareed is a, um, Khone, we, we, we've been working closely with young student doctors in the manufacturing scraps for money. Uh, these scraps even for, yeah, those that are in the medical facility, maybe top or, it's been, been, been lucrative. There's a company called Tank that we're competing with. Tank, you buy those scraps, they're not in the city. Smaller some, smaller some, when, when COVID hits, we realized, there was a lot of movement from the top tier and those that are in the medical facility. And those ones, that's why I'm taking, that's what we also realized. And we started producing scraps, we, we, there's a, you know, they're very, very, we, we tried to trim them with traditional printing. We tried to print them, cartoon films, so that. We all go for it, we cannot believe for now, that's one of the interesting things, we realized, there's nine. Now, in closing, um, the sky is the limit, I know we can hold it, but if you hand out the skies that you need, it's not a work that you have achieved. We are pretty lost. But on another, when I was conceived, it transcended from, uh, a part eighty-two, this generation. What do you think that we, with whatever opportunities that is at our disposal? There's a lot of institutions to serve. Now, how do we best position ourselves? And my idea, I represent, I've had the pleasure of presenting, unfortunately, I was declined, but I have stood my back over. And I'm grateful for, so that people can, can improve their, much better with this space. And I'm proud to say, from myself and the employee, now managed to recruit thirty people, so it's very good for. And it's all because of, you know, uh, feedback, you have a, don't take criticism as if it's something that's going to destroy. It's good for us. It's literally because it positions us to be able to, it's good for us. It's good for us. Like I was saying, including, speak us out. Um, we are moving into the online space. We are working on developing, completing the development of an app called Shiba. Now Shiba, you ask yourself, why Shiba? Shiba is an online store where you can be, tour, ready, accommodate, there are a lot of friends. We realized for the last year, there was a lot of friends that were talking to me, I mentioned, right? And there was a opportunity that we saw. So, we were able to say, let's work together. And house this other brands, not only friends, but businesses that are into, um, tangible items. We assist them, but they, but it's a, through our app. So that's the app that we can develop, it's called Shiba. It's on, it's kind of, we are, we are on, um, Android, so that we use it, I, I, so that's where we are. That's where we, in fact, are here. So, and thank you for giving me your ear, and I wish you the best in the future. And look, thank you for, it's in this thing to be a success, we, we appreciate it. We appreciate that, like, you know, that's why I'm telling you, information, that's why you create your information, right? When you know something, give it to somebody else, pass it on to somebody else. How to work, that's what we're doing here.
When they say, is there, is there one of your success stories, man? And we want more success stories. Who are these, who are the players of us who present our success stories? And we are presenting the success story to the seeders. We presented the success story with one of our vendors who was able to create a nice app and raise some cash out of it. Uh, you are all our success stories. And I think if it is for seeders, we recognize that there is an echo. Let me recognize our own members, I must introduce them, so that, so that you know them. The chapter select, we indicated is the principal, is not here. Is today represented by, uh, the deputy principal of the college, Esteban Jali, who is the co-CEO of Max, but, uh, we have already heard, uh, one of the bridges that we have, is, and we also have Mr. Pastor Kula, who is also our partner. And that's, 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 that's. I'm just going to introduce those who are here. She's an entrepreneur, one of our success stories, an entrepreneur. And, uh, I think we are here, who's, uh, they're all students, support, all into the college, it's also part of the project. But, we just want to ensure that we have our house in the necessary places. I'm going to call about, upon, Mr. Uh, when I started, I thought, I said to you that we are moving into the level of invention, automotive, the person, we will formalize these businesses that are in the process. And one of the partners that will help us, is the, is the, is the, I'm happy that this, all the way from Singapore, we have of this. We are going to help more of this, different time. Let's give you the background, uh, just to explain what they are doing themselves, uh, and, uh, thanks.
Hello, this is Kula. Hello, this is Kula. It's, we're here, from the, from the, uh, formal name is Aramai. My name is Madhav Tassaro. I'm the associate general for the Aramai, and I'm based in Wales. But, so, so mine is, is going to be very short, and it's going to be industry specific. Because as you can hear, I tell you, I'm going to be appealing for the guys that are in the, in the automotive space. More in particular, aftermarket space, we can have five, six, in, in the base. Basically, anyone else that is in the, in the aftermarket space in the room, automotive industry, what's happening?
And then you mentioned the brake linings, that's, and then you mentioned the hydraulic hose for the grader, the, the crane.
And you know, what is that, 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 we're just getting this crane? The fitment center, fitment center.
Fitment center, oh, yes, yes.
The, the, tires, the, 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 yeah. But, so, so I'm referring to the aftermarket space, I think, uh, Mercedes. Uh, it's, it's, it's the space of the motor industry, where things are all on a brand new. Okay, and so that speaks to the mechanical shops, that speaks to the hardware shops, that speaks to the tire establishments, and the fitting stations are also part of the automotive industry. And, um, yes, all, all the, all the, you know, all the shops that are, you know, um, you know, that are in the automotive part, so that is the automotive space. And that is where Aramai is a living voice for its members. That is where Aramai is the biggest representative of its members. Its members are business, uh, businesses, and so it will be all these businesses that are counted. So it's, one of the targets, it's, uh, mechanical shops, and tire establishments, and fitting stations, and so on. And, so, in this presentation that we do, uh, basically, our, our fundamental, uh, you know, objective is to protect, is to protect the, what you call the, the interest of these businesses, right? Uh, and then also, uh, we represent these businesses, you know, in different platforms, where these businesses can benefit, okay? But, you know, how do we come to do that? So on a daily basis, you know, we register businesses in the aftermarket space to form part of the Aramai. And within this registration process, then we apply our accreditation, our accreditation criteria, which is the criteria that is very strong, uh, that addresses compliance from, uh, from premises where these businesses operate, to operational efficiency, labor relations, uh, to, uh, ensuring that, yeah, these businesses are using, why you can't, uh, like, yeah, if these businesses are using, you know, the, the, the necessary tools that must be used, you know, uh, within, uh, these mechanical workshops, right? So, so, so by doing that, we, um, we, we, we want to ensure that at the end of the process of unboarding these businesses to become Aramai members, these businesses then should come out to be credible businesses, attractive businesses, businesses that are open and uh, uh, which, uh, can, 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 can be able to access the opportunities within the automotive industry, okay? So because Aramai is an organization in existence for, for our charities, we, we are in good books to many of the industry stakeholders, including insurance companies, warranty companies. And so, uh, what has happened over the years, that we, we have been selling our accreditation, uh, the criteria to this, uh, to this partner. and the criteria to this, to this partner of ours, to this industry stakeholder, to say, our members, you know, have passed this other criteria, and therefore do business with our members. And so, hence, you know, you find that the workshops that only can do warranty work, or insurance work, or brand new work for that, for that matter, is they, since their right to repair is placed, all of those people, or all of those businesses should be businesses that have been approved, that have been approved by RMI, and businesses that are RMI members. Okay, so, so, so basically, in a nutshell, what, what I'm trying to say is, you know, from where you are as business people, you, you will not be able to conquer the operations of your businesses, and, and, and the demands of, you know, the, the, the survivor of the business itself. So RMI is there more like a big brother. And I encourage you to talk to me after this. Let's see how we can, you know, onboard you to become members of the RMI, so that we can take you through our accreditation process, and assist you to, to, to comply and be members of the RMI. Because once you are a member of the RMI, you're automatically placed in a, you are in a good space. You're automatically positioning yourself as a business, to attract, you know, the stakeholder that I just mentioned, to be able to access opportunities through warranty companies, insurance companies, and do those things. And of late, we just had, you know, the aftermarket workshops that we allowed to work on a brand new vehicle through the right to repair, what you call guidelines. But I don't know if you've changed, you know, the guidelines of the right to repair. It's, it's basically, you know, the guidelines that have been, you know, promulgated, which are effective from the first October, and that gives the rights for the, for the aftermarket workshops to work on brand new vehicle. And that program was, was championed by the RMI back in 2015. And it's one of the efforts to obviously ensure that we bring business to our markets. But I can explain this detail to anyone who is in this room and operates in the aftermarket space of the motor industry. And, yes, I think I've said enough. In fact, thank you very much. We are serious about automotive. We don't go to step back, and bring it to the person. Small or big, we bring it to the person. And I'm going to call the, the, you know, the K. What's the name of the woman? It's the, the woman who is there. Just give me five minutes. And it's not a very fast time, it's not very much. Yeah, the new lady, yeah.
And the students have been to network. Now, all of you have the ear and sound. I think they have a camera in the ceiling. Next time we are here. We meet the next time. The last year. It's what I'm saying, bro. If you want to apply, come to the office. Take some speakers for those who want to assess. You don't have a problem with it. The campus manager is here, assisting them. We are here and they are put in the room. Mr. Chow, our assistant. Now, we will add a trainings. Listen to this one again. We are fifteen new, people in this room. Who trained them. But part of the top, those fifteen people. Who are the pros with me. Are the fifteen who play, they will train them as well. Each of them who are as many. Okay. Them close to you, you will do the training. When they finish the training, we will start. They will be here in the center of the campus. This is the issue. The aim is to try. Next time we have this. I know we look at. We need to have, they call it students. Of them passing with all qualifications, basic qualifications. Some of these not even want to listen to ethics. Now, they must have what I've taught. The training that they have is. So, I didn't want that in terms of business. Having big business. I am in business and so. And let us ask. Because if we're going to train in automotive, if we need a car, why you need the back there? But you please just commit. And when we come, our assistant, we start there. We are coming to any one time sent here. And come and communicate to us. Just lay the bridge. Oh, we call it things. And I will call upon this guy here. Who is coming up to do after the time ceremony.
So that they like to process. Good videos. Very interesting. For which we are. I read that my name is too much. He was part of the police college. And I understand. Of him. Who was the first. He were a brutal friend. But then he should have. And that should not indeed. Is he the sign of the king test. From here. What I'm gonna do. For the moment. How I. The leader gave trouble. Since when. Send out. By the way, this is. Of business. So, like this. I want it. When they send out. And we. The first thing that's. That we can. Is to ensure that the objective that we. In the mission of the sender. If he's not here, I just. Therefore, it's been now in existence. But I, I am a guru. I'm the person. We simply want. By what I consider. A rather timeless. Root. And direction that I believe. But since your assumption. Yes, I mean. And. We have seen. Marketing. And for that, on behalf of management, that no. For your, for your idea. Or the issue of the age. Now, you have a way. I think it's very, very. You know, you will see in your own, but not in the future. And you are sometimes a good person. By how much you do. Before says one thing, but you can make everything. In everything, there must be. So that it does behind. To you in person. And we could not work for you. In your capacity, acting to the best. And showing that the. Those things. See now, the. The. We have this. We are also powerful in. Okay, now that's. What? But what? The. Much better say, it's that. Here is behind the question. You know, I'm, I'm by you. And. It's maybe every, in a way I am. But I, I think you have cut enough on the same cloth. Now must keep not there. I will not continue. I will do my best. Only like me now. And if I will not together with. And ensure that now you enjoy the necessary support. In this market group, cannot, I'm sure. But I cannot be an expert. My own. Group that you will did not afford on this age and on this morning. We also now plan to play our part in. So. For making a success, it was. By way of not crazy. With God. Because not any of us to start. I was getting worried that they might not exist. The gravity of God. You are the, the, the. Is really. And thank you very much. You have shared the expertise you have. And last time. Long way to go. Act. I'm sure. And what I thought was a surprise, I have. But I will look. Now from now on, we do. Because. All I saw was you. You're pretty. You, you, you. You're native. And all of that I have. But this classmate. Classmate. As you put it, order today. And next person, they come here more. Yes. And as you can see, exactly what they will say. The order. I can not do it. It's a lot of that. Then you see. They are saying. Who he what what. The right move is again, what is that? The wrong move. Wrong move. And some of them. Salaries. They will be sad, right? Now, I, man, man, I don't know. So, I go. For what I give. For what? Yeah, but also. I'm on top of what I. There can be so. You be. You go last in the body. Who we are, who we are, who we are still in this. Then I. That is, I have a feeling. I have a feeling. But I'm. I forget. That is a cultural. It's a cultural mindset. From that. And. I don't make. My. I just don't give him. All the fish I have. No, they are. And I expect. I had. I had applied. I think the food. The way they don't have to. So we need now to. How do we make this decision? Help them. Also, all those head lappers from all of France. And. What I give. From. Good officials are quite gentle. Then we get. Early weeks. We are. The man who already. But in that. But no, man. But I can, by the intent that you look up. Okay. All right. And I'm not bad mouth for this. If you were a guy, I mean, I see tender to convince. You. It has come, probably to treat. And then. Some of them are afraid of. I guess satisfied who be. Characters. Simple. That you not satisfied. What do you do? It is related. On what you mean it? I do know. Does there is. Cold. Either expired or. Or it is. That means. Right? Now, they are trying to convince them on the inside it. On this level. Right, it now both. Because. Now, maybe you are a bit of a fool. Or I am saying. But you are good. That may be right, right? But of my thought, I mean, those. But that is. Those. For guys in this place. But for a. You can do. They want to convince. But I said, I don't mind. I have very elementary development. So. Let's say. The college. Omit College. Is a red institution. Yama Kuchana. Right? For. You of Kuchana. Man to go to the college. And then when. The kind of us. The programs that ask. That would be able not dance. That are titillating teaching institutions. Our students. Who and the unfair place in the limits of them becoming. Also, we end in the years. And that is where most of the students become. Now. But I. We will. As we are. We will respond to ourselves. By means. Lying with all the laws of. The text. And for. Fairly about. Because. And some people, what is this? But I have to be aware of this. And or no employee. From the. Now, the port of hundred capuses. Especially between the. They will go. We cannot expect. My, this is all you. Please don't. I didn't go into the local things. And I have had it. Three months. The trenches of papers. This must have. Like any issue is white. So, I. The trenches of paper, this must have, like, any of these people's white man, so white.
Thanks very much, yeah. This, I'm going down, my, to share that I was located, to see that I was located. Again, thank you very much, we, we did forward the meeting with you eh, in the nearest possible future. We would hear from Mr. Mato, but from management, we wish to everything of the best in order, which I have to ask, and we sincerely hope for your business now, well, to now grow from strength to strength. So, the one of this is, you yourself can handle all the as, eh, I was saying, you can handle all and mentor those that are coming after you. And on that note, I will not, thank you not for your audience. Whoever I have not mentioned by name, this, over here, this is a kind of exercise that I'm not and moreover, my wonderful principal now asked me not to come and speak on my, on his behalf. Eh, what I tried not to check with him, what they said will be, depending there, what will be, who will be in our heads, and, no, 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 can't you see, it is, you give me when it's, please, right?